Good evening and welcome to the August 4th, 2011 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of West Sacramento. On the side table over there is a copy of the agenda with the packet along with request to speak forms. If you wish to address the commission this evening, you need to fill out a request to speak form, even if it's for items not on the agenda. If you have multiple items you wish to speak on, please indicate that on the form. And I'll call you in order that I receive them. And for fairness, we typically allow three minutes per speaker. So with that, we generally start the commission meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, I would like to honor birthday of Commissioner Moore by having him start the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
A pledge of allegiance to the public, to the United States, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is for presentations by the public for items that are not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. And actually, I have no request to speak on general items. So I'll take it to Charlene for staff correspondence.
Thank you, Chairman Levy. On July 20th, the City Council considered the West Coast Recycling Project Appeal. And I just wanted to update you and let you know that they upheld the Planning Commission's approval of the project. And then you should have a memo from staff on item number four, which is the Workshop on the Wireless Telecommunications Policy. And then also just a reminder to everyone that there are still some audio difficulties. And so we're going to be doing some microphone sharing. So if there's difficulty hearing, let us know. It'll remind us that, for instance, the city attorney and I are sharing a microphone. Staff will be presenting from the other side of the room where there's a microphone that's working, or they might present from the podium. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This time, the commission should disclose ex parte communications. Planning commissioners need to disclose any communications they've had with applicants on the agenda. And seeing none, we will move on to the consideration of approval for the minutes for the July 16th, 2011 commission meeting.
I believe it was June 16th?
Was it June 16th? It was June 16th, you're right. Sorry.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Sorry, moved by Commissioner Sandin, seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays or none? So first item on the regular agenda is public hearing regarding the Applegate Tentative Parcel Map. And that will be discussed by Ms. White.
Good evening, Chairman Levy, and members of the Planning Commission. The applicant seeks approval of a parcel map to subdivide a four-acre parcel into two lots. The project site is located at the northeast corner of Harmon Avenue and Harmon Road and Hillary Avenue. Parcel One would be approximately 2.05 gross acres, and Parcel Two would be approximately 1.95 gross acres. The applicant is also seeking approval of a variance to exceed the maximum three-to-one lot depth-to-width ratio. And this ratio basically means that the length of the lot cannot exceed three times the width of the lot. The applicant originally submitted a parcel map to subdivide the property into four one-acre parcels. However, that four-lot configuration could not meet the Yolo County's Environmental Health Department sewage disposal requirements. And so the map was revised to comply with the county's requirements, which created lots that exceed the maximum three-to-one lot depth-to-width ratio. The proposed lot depth-to-width ratios are 3.55 to one and 3.34 to one. There are several lots in the vicinity of the property that exceed the lot depth-to- width ratio. These lots have a 4.5 to one lot depth-to- width ratio, so approving the variance would not constitute a grant of special privilege. The staff report discussed various alternatives for reconfiguring the tentative map, but none of the alternatives achieved compliance with the county's sewage disposal requirements. So, you know, staff therefore believes that this is a unique circumstance, given that there are no viable alternatives for the project to comply with the city's requirements and the county's requirements as well. Since findings for recommending approval of the tentative map and the variance can be made for this project, staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, certify that the Planning Commission has determined that the negative declaration is the appropriate level of environmental review under CEQA, and finds that the negative declaration represents the independent judgment of the city, and approve the requested tentative parcel map and variance subject to the conditions and findings as identified in the staff report, and waive condition number 12 regarding the undergrounding of the existing overhead utilities. And this concludes my presentation. The applicant is available in the audience in the event that the Planning Commission has any questions as well.
Thank you, Sandra. Given that the applicant is here, does he or she wish to actually address the commission? No, okay, thank you. Well, at this time, I do need to open the public hearing. I have no request to speak. However, I will keep it open for a short time in the event that the commission has questions for the applicant. At this time, are there questions of staff?
Yeah.
A couple of questions. One, I just wanted to get clarification. Is the proposed new property line just to the west of that multi-car garage? You know, I drove by it, it's hard to tell from the map exactly. Maybe the applicant would...
It's dividing the two homes?
There's two, as you mentioned, there are two homes in the property. So there will be one home in each lot.
Okay. One structure, as I recall, had multiple garage doors on it. Was the property line just to the left of that building?
No, the brick house and the garage.
Yeah. I'm sorry, if we were actually going to have you answer questions, could you actually come up to the podium and speak into the microphone? And because this is being recorded, if you wouldn't mind just sharing your name before you begin. And thank you for coming up to answer the questions.
Yes, I'm Linda Kimsey.
Thank you.
So the applicant's daughter. Regarding that question, the brick house, two-story brick house and the four-car garage are one part property. And then the ranch-style house is where my mother's living, and that's the other property. So it would be between, there's trees like between the two, it would be between the two homes.
I think I understand. Thank you very much for that clarification. And I have one other question for staff. Any other questions for the applicant before she goes?
Okay, thank you.
Were all setbacks met after this?
Yes.
Lot split?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have the blessing of the Environmental Health Department on this one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chase. Anybody on this side? Okay, I have a couple of questions for staff. I'm sorry, Joe, did you have a question?
I actually have one question. I'm not sure if you can hear me or not. The portion of the property... Sorry. The portion of the property that's going to be abandoned, I'm just trying to, is that the, kind of that little sliver that's sticking out on the bottom of the map?
Yes.
And that just what? City takes ownership of that, or what happens?
That's going to be the portion of the Antioch Road that's encumbered by this property. That's what's going to be abandoned.
Okay, so maybe I didn't understand.
Not the entire road, no.
Okay.
No, it's just incorrectly shown. So there's a condition that says that needs to be corrected.
Okay, so I guess I, maybe you can explain the abandonment piece to me. That might be a learning.
Can you explain the abandonment? I had the same question. By abandonment, the city, specifically, does the city take ownership of that property?
The abandonment means, let me go to that condition.
What's happening is that right-of-way is set aside right now for the city. So the abandonment actually is taking that property and putting it back into the ownership, the private ownership. And so Antioch is not planned to be a roadway in the future. So we actually have some plans to bring forth abandonment along several sections.
Okay, so this is...
And we have Mark Collier from Development Engineering who's here, who can speak more about future plans on Antioch, if you're concerned about that.
No, I was actually just trying to understand what the term meant, abandoned. Were they abandoning it, or was the city abandoning it?
The city is abandoning it. And so when we have a public right-of-way and we abandon it, basically, if, typically, the property line goes to the center. And so if we were abandoning the whole thing, half of it would go to the Applegate property, the other half would go to the property across Antioch. So it goes back to adjacent properties in an abandonment process. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. I think it does for me, as long as this is consistent with the city's plans to abandon that entire strip.
Yes.
There's only a couple of things that I would like to maybe suggest. Instead of waiving condition 12, could we use our standard condition language for delaying all such time that the city wishes to underground that area? I know where this is, so I would imagine this is going to be a long, long time away.
In the rural residential area, rural residential, rural estate, and agricultural, I don't believe there were ever any plans to underground.
Okay.
The road section doesn't allow for it currently. So it would be a significant change to city standards. Where I could see, it could be a potential for undergrounding in the future, which has happened in some areas of the rural estates. For example, over along Marshall Road, where the Planning Commission has considered this condition before, there was an actual, a general plan amendment, rezone. So it would seem like there would almost have to be a rezone opportunity. And then you could have another, if there was a rezone, you'd have another opportunity to request the undergrounding. So that's why we put it in, since this is rural. We didn't want to miss it.
Okay, I will withdraw my request then.
But, you know, the commission, that's something you, it's all within your purview to consider.
Unless anybody would like to entertain that, I'll withdraw my request. All right, one more question. Sandra, the minimum lot size is noted as being one house per one acre in this area. Is that with use of clustering?
Sorry, you said one, I heard you say that one house...
The minimum lot size is .5 to one acre per household?
That's density.
And, okay. Is that, is the one-acre criteria dependent on clustering in this area?
No.
Okay, so that is, at what point is it .5? A half of a house per one acre. In other words, one house per two acres. You listed a range of the density for this zone. I'm just wondering why there's a range.
Well, that's the density, yeah, that's correct. That is the density. But we're typically seeing one unit per acre. Now, you could also have, I don't want to muddy the waters for you, you can also have second units in this zone as well.
On a prop, okay, on a property, so in other words, this property, for example, is four acres and has two units. We're dividing it, you will have one property with 1.9 on 1.95 acres and one property on two.
Right, that's correct.
I want to make sure that...
It's within this density, yes.
It is?
Yes.
And that's without even a requirement of clustering, so...
Correct.
Thank you. I think that is, that's it for me, for my questions. Are there any other follow-up questions? No, I will go ahead and close the public hearing then. Thank you again. And I will look for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we affirm staff's recommended action.
Okay, it was moved, all right, who did second it?
I did.
Okay. It was moved by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Mace, all Commissioner Chase. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any nays, hearing done, passes unanimously. Thank you. I don't think we need to hear the appeals on that one, do we, Charlene?
Yes, actually, you did. Thank you for reminding me. For tentative map appeals, any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action. The appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is number three, public hearing regarding the modification to final map. This is for the property on West Capitol Avenue. And Ms. White will also be giving this presentation.
The applicant is seeking modification of the final parcel map condition that requires the undergrounding of the existing overhead utilities. And this project site involves three parcels totaling approximately 4.85 acres. Parcel One is already developed with the Valero gas station mini-market and a truck stop. The tentative parcel map was approved by the Planning Commission on April 17, 2008. And one of the conditions of the map requires that all existing overhead utilities along the project frontage be undergrounded at the time of site development unless waived by the Planning Commission. The final map was approved by the City Council on November 5, 2008, and the map was recorded on December 16, 2008. Requests to modify or amend an approved tentative map are typically appealed to Planning Commission within the appeal period, timeframe. In this instance, the applicant is seeking modification of a final parcel map that has already been approved by City Council and a map that has already been recorded. And based on staff's recollection, this is the first application where staff has processed a request to modify a condition on a final map. We have consulted with the city attorney's office, and we were advised that the Planning Commission could consider this request. The applicant submitted a building permit in September of last year to demolish the existing Valero Mini-Mart and construct a new AM/PM convenience store and car wash, which triggered compliance with the requirement to underground the overhead utilities. The property owner is seeking a deferral of the condition until the hotel site is developed, and that hotel site is slated for Parcel Three. For financing purposes, the applicant wishes to defer the undergrounding until Parcel Three is developed with the hotel site, which is slated to occur in the fall of next year, 2012. The Planning Commission has approved deferrals in the past for previous projects. Deferrals were approved for the Bridgeway Lakes North Besting Tentative Subdivision Map and the Jefferson Plaza. We do not feel that tying the undergrounding to a specific timeframe would be practical for this project in the event that Parcel Three is developed, in the event that, for whatever reasons, development is delayed on Parcel Three, this could possibly compel the property owner to come back to the Planning Commission again to amend the condition. Since all the findings for recommending approval of this map modification can be made for the project, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find that reliance on the previously certified negative declaration is the appropriate level of environmental review under CEQA, and modify the condition of approval to underground the existing overhead utilities along the West Capitol Avenue project frontage for this project. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant is in the audience and I believe would like to make a presentation to the Planning Commission.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, actually, I have a question for Sandra. Sandra, you mentioned Parcel Three and the hotel. In my recollection, the hotel was on the property that went all the way back to the levee and was also adjacent to the bike path, next to the crane on your map. I'm reading that as Parcel Two, and Parcel Three would have been the Burger King.
I'm sorry, it's parcel, the hotel site is on Parcel Two. Am I correct, Jesse? I believe it's Parcel Two.
Okay.
Parcel Three was supposed to be slated for development of a drive-through restaurant. I'm sorry, that's my error.
Okay, and the trigger is...
The trigger, correct, is Parcel One.
Okay, so the requested trigger is still Parcel Three, which is a quick-serve restaurant, which the commission has already approved.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, other questions of staff before I open the...
Just a quick, I think it's really just a clarification, because I think it is pretty clear in the conditions, but I've heard the word "waive" being tossed around, and I think we're specifically talking about a deferral.
Deferral, I'm sorry, if I said "waive," I didn't mean to say "waive." It should be "deferral."
Thank you.
Actually, I have one more question. Was the deferrals that you said that have been approved in the past, were those on tentative maps?
For the, yes, one was a tentative map, and Jefferson Plaza, I think that was for a tentative map as well.
So that's just, that's the main difference here, tentative versus permanent?
Exactly. Yeah, those maps had not been, they had not been final, nor had they been recorded.
Thank you. Ms. Sandin?
Sandra, I have a question about the expiration of our actions, and it's, we have a 36-month window. Will this, if we take an action tonight, does that extend? Does it reset the clock?
No.
Because then the project itself will go outside of the timeframe, so they'd have to come back anyway, is that...
No, this map has already been final.
Right.
So it's, I know, this is a unique animal.
Okay.
The map has already been recorded. This map is done, so that 36-month period to record the map, that's gone. That condition has been satisfied. Most of the conditions of this map has been satisfied. It's, I know it's unique, it's different, but in this instance, you know, typically you would see requests come forward to the Planning Commission at the parcel map stage, before it's approved by the City Council, before it's recorded. But in this instance, this map has already been recorded, is final. There's this condition out there that, you know, is being triggered by a building permit.
And so staff has no concern that this is precedent-setting?
No, we consulted with our city attorney's office, and so, because it is very unique and different.
Okay.
And so that's why we consulted, and we were advised that we can, you know, move forward on this request at this, you know, with the Planning Commission.
Counsel? Yeah, we did talk about this. This is a pretty unique situation. I think, my view on it is, the condition referred specifically to unless waived by the Planning Commission. Normally, one would expect that all tentative map conditions are either satisfied or deemed to be complete when the council approves the final map. However, in this case, we're operating under a condition that expressly reserved to the Planning Commission a right to waive that. And so I think this seems like a reasonable solution that was acceptable to the applicant and got the city where it needed to go. But we are, this is a fairly unusual one. So I'm hopeful this is not going to establish any kind of a pattern that we fall into. So no, Charlie, this is not precedent, we don't.
So I might understand the conditions and the actual map are, sort of separate them?
Well, Ms. Sandin's question...
Are they all part of the one piece?
Is a legitimate one, is that normally a tentative map has a life. But that life, during that period of time, they have to final the map. They did final the map during that period of time. So this would not be, this doesn't extend anything, because the tentative map had already reached the point where the final map was approved. This is sort of a lingering condition attached to the project. And so we're exercising the discretion that was reserved to you to rule specifically on the question of undergrounding.
One final question for me, and, actually, well, I'll take mine first. Sandra, are we allowed to change the amended condition tonight, or are we limited to vote on it up or down?
You are allowed to amend staff's recommended condition, yes you can.
Okay.
You can amend what we proposed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore?
And I guess I only have one question for you, Sandra, in it, I don't, it kind of talks about the hotel and Parcel Three, but Parcel Three, of course, being the restaurant is the trigger point of this. Are we assuming that he's going to build the Burger King first and then the hotel second?
The, I should have mentioned in my staff report...
Or should we just put down if either one of those parcels are developed, it kicks in the undergrounding?
Well, I think for financing purposes, it works, and he can elaborate on that. It makes more sense for the hotel site to be developed, and then at that point, he's willing and able to...
Put that site too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, to, at that time, to underground the overhead utilities along the project.
But wonder if he builds the other one first? I mean, that should, if either one of those are on that parcel be subdivided, if either one of those develops, that should trigger starting the undergrounding.
I don't know.
In my opinion.
Yeah. But it's been represented to us that for financing purposes, the hotel would, you know, generate the...
Well, God, I'm not a banker, so I can hardly wait to hear this one. So it'll be fun. Okay, we'll wait.
I think that would be great to hear during the deliberation, similar questions and comments. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. The applicant wishes to speak, and I do have one request to speak as well. I'm not sure if it is the applicant, however. So again, if you could just state your name for the record, thank you.
Members of the commission, Peter Tobin with Bardhausen Engineers. And this is kind of a strange situation. The civil engineer that was part of the project, is part of the parcel map, was, quote, somebody else. And that's a huge condition of approval. He should have said something to the owner. Anytime you have a final map... Anytime you have a final map, you're going to have a subdivision ordinance, case like that. I fully understand that. He never red flagged it for him. That's really what's happening here. So what we're doing is, we need to amend this. It's a little bit of a strange situation in front of that site, because you're dealing with a Caltrans encroachment permit with detector loops for traffic. You're dealing with traffic controllers, signal boxes, multiple utility, multiple utilities out there. Every time I go out there, I find something else. So it's, it's very, very complex. And we're actually in the process of getting an encroachment permit, and we're really looking forward to getting that and actually building and starting November 1st. So that's, that's our goal here. In terms of the condition of approval, yeah, I mean, the, either two or three, it probably should say two or three, the condition, because they're going to run, they're going to get built at the same time, because the motel and fast food are going to kind of feed off each other. So if you're looking to amend the condition, that's probably what to do there. And finally, we're just asking for some relief, so we, thank you for your guidance here.
But before you go away, actually, since you do represent the applicant, I'll ask the commission if they have any questions...
Sure.
Of the applicant. Seeing none? Okay, thank you for your time. At this time, however, I will close the public hearing, and we can deliberate and ask staff any recommended questions. Because I, I think Charlie had a really great point, mostly because I agree with it. I've, I've actually already penciled in some notes for how, how this could be worded, so I have some, some suggested text. If the commission does wish to go that way, and it's simply by adding either parcel two or three be developed, and parcels two or three, in a sense, if the commission wishes to go that way.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the applicant agreed that that's probably fine, because they'll develop them at the same time. But I mean, the reality is, if we're granting him relief while he remodels the Valero into an Arco, that's fine. But if you build something new on that site, on the site that we subdivided, then I think either one of the lots would trigger the undergrounding aspect of it. So I mean, that would make common sense to me. But I, and I think you could do it by just adding, if where it says three, you just put two and three, if either two or three develop. But I would rather defer to our attorney who knows everything, he said, to make sure that we can do something like that.
Yes, yes you can. I think you could do, that first sentence could revise to say shall be placed underground at the time that the first of parcel two or three are developed. So it's not the most grammatically perfect sentence, but I think it conveys the meaning. And then in the second sentence, two or three, located on parcels two or three.
I'm seeing nodding head. I am seeing a bunch of nodding. I have one comment. We have learned from one project that decided not to subdivide and then construct, and then wished to subdivide, that undergrounding became extremely expensive at that point. So just a side note, that it is often, or probably better to prepare or to underground during construction, if possible, because going back and doing it could, could result in higher expenses.
If I can add to that, we're actually...
I will, hold on. I actually have to open, reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, as part of the Arco civil engineering plans, we're actually going to install the conduit, so we don't have to come back and disturb the Arco. So the Arco gets built, we gotta, we gotta tear out the frontage and just at least put the conduit in for the future pulling of the electrical, so we're doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great foresight on that one. Mr. Chase?
Just a suggestion on it, I don't know if this would affect it at all, but given your comments, would it make sense to, to tie this rather than to the word devout to To allow for that undergrounding during construction as opposed to prior to?
I think occupancy is already tied to it.
Yeah, that is in the last sentence of the condition, that it has to be completed prior to the occupancy.
Okay.
And that's, that's pretty much our standard for improvements.
Any other comments, questions, motion?
Mr. Chairman, with the added condition of parcels two and three, I would make a motion that we affirm the recommended action of the staff.
Moved by Commissioner Moore. Seconded by Mr. Gahwan. All in paper, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing done. Passes. And Ms. Charper.
And so this is a bit unusual, but it is tied to a tentative map. So we're going to read the appeal for a tentative map. Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission in this matter regarding the change of the condition to undergrounding to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action. The appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
And just a note, I had to reclose the public hearing, because I had accidentally, secondarily reopened it, so it is closed. I know, I'm stumbling all over the place. Okay, moving on to number four, Public Workshop on the Wireless Telecommunications Facility Policy Update, and this will be Kathy Allen.
Good evening, Chairman Leibig and members of the commission. The city's wireless policy was adopted in 1997. It has not been updated since that time. There have been numerous requests from this commission to update it, as well as various members of staff. So we are finally bringing you an updated draft of the ordinance. Some, some issues we're trying to address in this. We're trying to clear up the issue regarding single-purpose monopoles. There is a statute that allows them in some areas as close as 500 feet, or within 500 feet of residential, if technical evidence can be supported. However, there's been some clarification needed regarding what single purpose actually means. Staff has always, staff has always interpreted it to mean a pole that will accept only one And we'll, we'll get to single-purpose monopoles a little further on when we get to the changes in the policy. Public safety has become an issue in regards to wireless coverage, due to the fact that the majority of 911 calls these days come from a wireless phone. It's been estimated that as many as 25% of the households no longer have a landline, and so making sure that the infrastructure is there for proper wireless coverage is a very important thing. Our own fire department employs a reverse 911 system for emergency calls to its citizens. Landlines are automatically enrolled in that. However, wireless phones are not. The fire department is preparing a system where they will be able to enroll wireless customers in the reverse 911 system, probably by the end of this year. With a significant portion of the households not having a landline, this will be very important, and it will be added important that the coverage is good throughout the city, so that when those calls go out, that everyone will actually receive them. There are currently 23 wireless facilities in the city. Seventeen of them are in the north part of the city, north of the Barge Canal. There are six in Southport. Oops, went the wrong way. So this shows, this shows Southport here, and what we're trying to illustrate on this diagram has to do with if there was a prohibition from having a cellular site within 500 foot of a residential area, exactly what would be left in terms of an area to put them. The green hatched area is the area where they would not be allowed. So effectively, if there was a 500-foot prohibition, all you're left with in Southport is Southport Industrial Park. It's probably not adequate to reach the southern two villages when they build out, and so staff sees this issue as an issue that could become significantly important as the city builds up. With those issues in mind, we looked at where we could change the ordinance to try to make something that would improve the infrastructure, and also be something that hopefully the citizens that live in the city would find palatable. We majorly changed a few sections. The first one being prohibited facilities. We basically struck the whole section to make it so single-purpose monopoles were not allowed. We really want to make sure that co-location is the way that we go. And so we want to, in our new policy, make it so that co-locations are required on all new facilities. On permits with zoning administrator approval, we struck the whole first bullet. That was because in 2007, the state enacted SB 1627, which eliminated review for co-located wireless facilities. As the city no longer has the ability to require a discretionary permit, that's why we removed that section. Subsection, in that same area of the report, subsection G, sections D and E, we would now be requiring a wireless telecommunications facilities permit. The staff report says use permit, that was left in in error. To qualify for that, the facility is going to need to eliminate a gap in their carrier network. There must not be superior sites available, and the applicant must be able to demonstrate that service is going to be improved in an area that's currently underserved. On the section labeled major permits, which used to require a use permit, we're proposing changing that to a wireless telecommunications facilities permit. And this would actually have its own set of findings, unique to it. We did not include them in the staff report. Findings that we are proposing as a starting point were given to you in a memo tonight. Just briefly to sum up for the audience, there, to the maximum extent which is feasible, the proposed facility has been designed to be compatible with the community, that the facility is necessary to close a significant gap in coverage, that the applicant has submitted a statement of willingness to allow other carriers to co-locate on the wireless facility, the wireless facility is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and that the wireless facility complies with all requirements of state and federal laws, regulations and orders. We would be happy at the close of our presentation to get your, your feedback on that, as well as with the rest of the application, obviously. Finally, just to sum up, we eliminated the facilities master plan update section of the ordinance. We really don't use that anymore. All the information we require there is obtained in the application itself, so it was just a duplication of application, of information, so we've stricken that from the policy. The wireless telecommunications facilities section, it was changed to require all new facilities to accommodate co-locations. However, the applicant doesn't need to have all the carriers under contract at the time of application. And because of this, single-purpose facilities are now permitted, or prohibited, excuse me. And finally, we did add a third item to address the SB 1627, which prohibits entitlements for co-locations. The final thing we changed was, had to do with the emissions conditions. This section was stricken due to changes in state law, which state that no state or local government may regulate wireless facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequencies. This concludes my presentation. I look forward to hearing your comments, suggestions. I'm happy to hear what you have to say.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Again, this is Public Workshop. This is not a hearing, so, and I actually have no request to speak this evening. Before we get into questions, I would like to know that the, the report was, I found it very helpful, and it clearly identified and demonstrated the need for this type of policy change, and demonstrates need for the actual infrastructure down there, which I think we were stumbling over, finding that on our last hearing on this type of thing. So, actually, Kathy, I have a question before we even get into it. The piece of paper we have in front of us, I know that you, you read this and the findings, I'm not sure where it goes. And where do we insert this into the staff report?
It would be the findings that are attached to the wireless telecommunications facilities permit.
Okay, so these would be the findings that you would have to, that would have to be met?
Yes.
In, in, for zoner administrative action or approval, or for conditional use permit, if it came in front of the commission?
There would, for wireless facilities, there would no longer be a use permit. This permit replaces the use permit, hence the new findings.
Yeah, we would be creating a new section in the zoning ordinance, and so we would no longer apply the conditional use permit findings to a wireless telecommunications permit. We would come up with new findings specific for that permit, and that's what this draft was meant to give you an idea of what those findings might look like. We would return with what that, the zoning amendment that includes the findings when we return to you in a public hearing format for recommendation to the city council.
Under the, the policy, section G, the permits, D and E, actually reference a conditional use permit, though?
Yeah, that is an error, that needs to be stricken.
That needs to be stricken.
Yes.
Okay.
So it would refer to a wireless telecommunications permit and the findings associated with that.
Other comments? Mr. Chase?
Actually, some questions for you, Kathy or Charlie. And it's really on the permitting process. We're eliminating the conditional use permit, and I think we all know that a conditional use permit, once those conditions aren't met, can be terminated, I think legally. I'm actually referring kind of to paragraph L in the staff report, I'm not sure what page that's on. Periodic review required, and, you know, it discusses... And, you know, it discusses triggering termination of the permit. If it isn't a conditional use permit, and it does mention that it requires a building permit in here, I think a building permit is typically not rescindable legally, to my understanding, once it's been issued. Will there be something in this new wireless permit that will, similar to a conditional use permit, I guess, allow it to be rescinded if, if certain conditions aren't met?
Yes, we can do that. The whole reason for pulling away from the conditional use permit is that the conditional use permit has the public health and safety findings in it, which we can no longer apply to telecommunications facilities. And so we still want to maintain, we don't want to change the conditional use permit findings, because that applies to a whole nother series in the zoning ordinance. So that's why we're coming up with a new section specific to telecommunications facilities. And so our, our approach would be to have this permit act in the same way as like a use permit, but within the parameters we're allowed to regulate for telecommunications.
Then I guess along those lines, I would probably think, I would suggest we modify and add an item six to the, the findings that Kathy has given us, that, that in fact provides some grounds for withdrawal of that permit. I don't see anything in here that I would think legally could say you can go up and take that permit back.
Well, that'll probably be something that we'll have to, that'll be noted and we'll come back with that. We understand what we're kind of hearing from the commission.
The typical for a use permit, you, when it comes time to consider revocation of a use permit, it's not necessarily because the findings can no longer be made, it's typically because you violated the conditions of the use permit. So, to the extent there are conditions added to a wireless permit, you would have the same opportunity, but it would be based on a violation of those permit conditions. We don't typically go back and revisit use permits because 10 years later, somebody questions whether it's still necessary or desirable. That's not a, that's not really a basis to revoke a use permit.
But I think in this case, Jeff, what we're thinking, then, I mean, it's good to use something current. We had someone that wanted to put a pole up down by Tower Mart, and they only had, they thought one user, or they did have one user. And, but it was set up that it was going to be a multi-user pole. So if in some frame of time, two, three years, five years, they didn't have multi-users on there like they said they were going to have, that would be a basis to revoke the permit.
That might be difficult because you're, what we tried to do, I think, when I talked with Kathy about this, and this is still a workshop, so it is a work in progress. But the idea would be that the focus is on prohibiting the construction of a facility which is not designed to accommodate additional users. It's really difficult to, to put an expectation on a, on a, on the party building this in the first place, that they have to find someone else to go on there within a period of time. What if no one wants to use that pole within that time period? You're, so you're really, you're, you're looking to revoke based on circumstances that may be outside their control.
Thank goodness this is a workshop, you can look that up, see.
I mean, it would be, like, it would be similar to somebody coming in and saying, I want a use permit to be able to build a restaurant with a drive-through. And we say, okay, well, you can build it, so they build the facility, but they can't find a tenant that needs a drive-through. And we want to revoke the use permit, not because they didn't complete the construction within the period of time, but because they can't find the right tenant.
That makes sense.
And that would be a problem.
Over there is a condition that staff shouldn't be permitting any new poles within 1,000 feet if there is space available on a pole. 1,000 feet actually isn't very far. Perhaps we wish to increase that.
It's another thought. I mean, I think you're at a workshop point here, and I think what we should do is throw out a couple ideas and then let staff look at it, you know, and see what.
Yeah, and I think, I think that concept is okay, so long as there's a safety valve that says the applicant can come in and explain why that won't work, why co-location on that particular facility, for some reason, isn't feasible or doesn't provide the coverage that they need, or there's some other issue.
I'd go along with that. I mean, I think the, the philosophy behind it, as I understand it, is a developer coming in for a shopping center and requiring that you will have tenants in all of your spaces by a certain point, and of course, we can't do that, so. It sounds like it's a similar kind of a thing, as long as it's built to accommodate them, I think we've accommodated that.
I would think that the independent builders would, you know, seek out tenants, but could a, a carrier that built the pole make it sort of cost prohibitive for somebody else to come in? Yeah, I mean, those are some of the practical questions that I'm not sure I have an answer to, and how the negotiations go on between carriers or the, you know. There's always the question of, what if somebody just makes it proactively expensive for someone else to use it? And that's a difficult one for the city to control.
I, I understand that there could be a lot that would, you know, go into that, but that's, you know, something that worries me a little bit.
This is something that we are seeing a lot of jurisdictions go to. We've, Kathy did quite a bit of research on other jurisdictions, and we're continuing to find new, you know, ordinances that have been updated. And many of them are prohibiting the single purpose and requiring co-location, and there's a variety of means by where they're trying to ensure that that happens, by either requiring the applicant to actually submit a statement indicating that they will be making these spaces available for co-location, and how many. There is a clause in one of them that is similar to what Chairman Lee indicated about not allowing another co-location to go up within so many feet of one that still has space available. So all of those things are what we're seeing in other jurisdictions where the, where the industry's kind of going. So, great feedback.
Charlene, on that note, actually, one thing I was reminded of on this one was the freeway sign ordinance that we have. And on that, there is a non, or an anti-competitor exclusion condition on that. And I believe there's something on, on the thing that they have to sign that says they can appeal to the city if they're, if they feel they're being excluded. So I was just going to suggest maybe looking up that sign permitting language.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. There are some similarities because of the, particularly if we start drawing sort of a grid. No new facility within 1,000 feet of another facility that has a co-location. They're a little different because of the issue with the freeway signs. Here we really felt that it was necessary to insert ourselves, that would make success, to sort of insert ourselves into the process. But you're right, there are some similarities here. The other thing that occurs to me, and I don't know exactly, have a limited number of carriers, and if, one carrier makes it difficult for everybody else to find, they can probably expect to get that, that response back from their competitors the next time they want to co-locate. If you have a condition like you're describing that would say, forcing this co-location requirement, that may force them to cooperate.
I guess a question for Charlene. The last, the Tower Mart, or adjacent to, tower that came in was apparently a third-party speculative venture to then go out and, you know, try to find carriers to put on it, which, you know, is fine. Has that been fairly common, or have most of the other towers in town been developed by a specific carrier? Do we know? I just wonder if there's a trend in terms of how these are developed?
Been about 50/50.
Third-party versus carrier?
Yes. Seems like we are seeing more third-party, though, of late.
The, you made an interesting comment about the freeway sign and the desirability because of the limited number of them. And that sparked a thought that we are not limiting the number of these towers in this permitting process. And just doing the math, actually, I wasn't able to finish it, but it's, you would get 12 towers between the top and the bottom if you just did one line down, and we're, we're a little bit wide, too. So you actually end up with dozens of potential towers in this. So maybe some sort of limit language, or increase that, that number from 1,000 to a higher number? I don't know what it is, but. Otherwise, you get five per mile and...
I'd suggest we, if possible, stay away from a numeric limit of X number of towers, because that, without some, some, something to support where that number came from, it has, pick a number. But a distance, that, that's a more logical thing.
And that would probably work better with the telecommunications companies anyway, because they pretty much work off triangulation. And so there's some, there's some information out there that we could probably find and determine what their typical spacing requirements are in their triangulations.
Is it 500 feet? Is that an arbitrary number, or where do we come up with that?
That goes...
Good question, but I'm sure Charlene has an answer.
No, I don't. I, I think it just goes back to what was typical at the time, back in 1997.
Well, kind of a follow-up to that, and thank you to staff for the wonderful materials here. I'm just curious, is it possible to redo this map, like at 350 feet or 100 feet, just to see if that even opened up any more space in the, in the residential area?
So you want a, a second and a third map with 350-foot radius?
Kind of only if it's, only if it's easy to do. I mean, if you sent this away and it took them a week to process it, then I don't...
Our IT staff did that in-house, so I'm sure they would be able to create maps with smaller radiuses for you.
Okay, I'm just curious to see what that would look like, because that's, I mean, a lot of this area down here is residential, and I'm not convinced that this map would look any different if you shrunk that, or along the same lines of where our 500 feet originally come from.
Mr. Chase?
A question on the, with the 1,000-foot criterion, was that tied to a service limit, or was it relative, was it an aesthetic kind of a thing, so don't have towers, too many, too close together?
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question, Bob.
The, I...
It's aesthetics.
The limitation of, of not being, the towers not being closer than 1,000 feet to each other, was that an aesthetic kind of decision, so they're not popping up everywhere, or was it related in any way to cell phone service?
It's probably more of an industry standard, what we've seen in other ordinances. 1,000 feet's pretty common. It's also used a lot in the freeway signs as well.
Nobody wants to hear me talk about this. I happen to believe that, you know, unless we can come up with a better idea, 500 feet's still a good idea within our city, because I certainly don't want a cell tower in my backyard, nor do I want one just like we had before. I was really hoping when we got this ordinance, we were going to see something different and unique, and allow us to do things that are a little different than what we've been seeing before, like going to Tower Mart and sticking a tower on their sign up there. Because you only have to be about 30, 40 feet in the air to get cell coverage. You could go to the high school, you could go to, you know, the town center with their towers out there, and come up with some unique idea of how we can allow them, they might be within 500 feet, but they're right on or in something that would make them work still for a cell user. I was looking for that type of stuff to come out of here, not just thinking that we're going to still allow towers. I mean, if it's going to have to be in residential areas, then we need to come up with something different and unique that maybe will work in there. And now we start talking about putting them in the tower at the town center. I mean, God knows how tall that is. But that's the kind of stuff I'm looking for. Go to the high school, maybe, and allow them, maybe the old ordinance didn't let them go onto the school grounds, but there's that whole pit out there that's a runoff pit, that maybe one could go out in that area. I, I'm really, I was looking for something totally different to come out of this ordinance, not just using our same old ordinance, because I still think, and even if you use the ordinance, use some of the things that other people do. And, you know, right in here, they go, if you have a tower, then, and we talked about it at the cell tower out by Tower Mart, and I think Bob brought it up, he goes, can you move it back? Well, maybe as high as you have the tower, it's got to be set back that many feet into the property. I don't know if that works. It was a concept, though, and we didn't have that luxury. And then, and I heard you say that we're not going to make this a conditional use, but is this still going to come back to the planning commission, just as an ordinance? Because every other city that you represented here, except one, requires a conditional use permit.
Or a wireless permit.
Well, no, they, and all the other cities require a conditional use permit. But if we have a wireless permit, are we going to use it just like a conditional use permit and have it still come back?
That is staff's recommendation with this, yes.
Yeah, and I...
Now, you could choose to make it an administrative permit and have it returned just to staff.
But it is administrative if it's only, if it's going on a commercial piece of property. But I think that, you know, and I, I was trying to read some of these things, it's like you could have a, a tower that's close to a residential area, but these towers in every other city, I mean, they're 30 feet, 36 feet. They may not be able to be co-location towers, but maybe that's what we need to look for, because if the one that came before us was in that tree line that was 30, 40 feet, 40 feet what the trees were going to be, maybe that would have been something that we could have looked at. But when it sticks up twice as high as the tree, that doesn't seem realistic, because that isn't what I'd want to see. So, you know, I, I saw, though, that throughout this, most of the people, when they were really getting into this, particularly in a residential area, you try to make it where it's mounted on some sort of a building, or a tower, or a monument, and maybe that's what we need to look at also, where those permits, we can make them acceptable in those areas. And, you know, when you say it's absolutely not acceptable, I was looking, and Jeremy brought up a great point, because that whole business area that's down below Southport, Bridgeway Lakes, where we're going to have the big shopping center and stuff, there's nowhere in that shopping, I mean, according to your map, that shopping center is going to be within 500 feet of residential.
Correct, because it's a mixed use. That village in Yarborough is a mixed-use village.
What about the golf course? We can't use the golf course?
Well, that's the spot that's open. You could float the tower on the lake. That's, that's the little thing that's open.
But you know what? That's a possibility, but it doesn't show on this map.
Yeah. Just to go back to one of your early points, our prior wireless ordinance allowed these types of facilities to be co-located on buildings and support, support structures like football stadium lights, Tower Mart signs, and we actually have some. There are wireless facilities on the Riverpoint Marketplace freeway sign, and also on the IKEA sign. So, our prior ordinance allowed it, this one does, too. That part has... That part hasn't changed. It's actually in definitions under C, "Co-location: The practice of sharing support structures and buildings by wireless telecommunications providers." So they don't necessarily have to co-locate on a tower, it can be on other types of structures. So that's still allowed.
Yeah. But I mean, my point was, I mean, I think we should emphasize that in the residential areas, and not an 80-foot tower, because there's nowhere in a residential area that an 80-foot tower is going to be wanted by that neighborhood.
That is something.
So we have to come up with alternatives, but we have no alternatives, and there's no setback to it. None of the things that we talked about at the Planning Commission when we tried to help that person, none of those things are in here, and I, I just thought maybe we should be looking at if it has, because it's highly possible that some carrier actually needs one of these towers. I don't know that that's true.
So then, would you, would you like us to look at adding in a clause whereby if these facilities are located on certain support structures that stealth the facilities, and/or inside of structures, that they would be allowed closer to residentially zoned property?
Yes, I think that's, that's what I'm getting at, is, I mean, I think that's the type of stuff we should be looking at in this ordinance, and try to get a little bit more aggressive in trying to figure out a way to help these people. Because I don't know how to help them without putting up an 80-foot tower, but I know those towers can go down to 40 or 50 feet and still be useful.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe in the residential area, I still don't want to see an 80-foot tower next to a residential parcel of property. But there might be alternatives to that, where you could have a tree, a flagpole, maybe you're going to use a flagpole, and we could go out into a park area, the school, and you light the flag, you do everything, but on top of it happens to be a little stick up in the air that makes the cell tower work. So, you know, I, I, that's the kind of stuff I'm really looking for in this ordinance, because the 500 feet makes sense to me, even today, like it did in 1997, and it was, all the poles were like that, but all the poles had to be these huge, tall poles back then. And there's alternatives out there that we can use, and I'd just like to see us try to use those alternatives as a better case to get it closer to residential. And then, if we really had a problem, and the guy says, there's absolutely nowhere that I can get cell coverage from, I need to have a tower, then I think you still have to look, and a couple of these ordinances said they could have a tower as tall as what was allowed in the area, which I thought was kind of interesting. However, I have absolutely no idea how tall we could have a house out there, anyway.
Uh, depends on the zone. In the mixed-use zone in Southport, that would probably give you your, your, your greatest amount of height, which I believe is 65 feet?
65 for a home?
That, no, that would be in the mixed-use area.
Yeah, but.
So you're talking about, you know.
How high can a house be?
A house, well, 45 feet, I think. Forty, 40 or 45 feet.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the alternative I think I'm looking for when I'm looking at this ordinance, going, you know, it's sitting there, it can be as high as what's allowed in the zoning. So if your zoning, all of a sudden said, you know, you can build a house out here, and it can be 40 feet, okay, so the tower can be 40 feet. Now, if that helps somebody, great, if it, I think it does, because I think they can bring them down that far and still get coverage, you might have to put in two small towers to get better triangulation or whatever, but I don't know. I, that's the kind of stuff I'm looking for in our ordinance. I think it's important that we try to make it helpful for them to use a building and run off the building. I think that's a grand idea, and then we can get them closer to residential, because it's hidden, and nobody noticed. So, I mean, we actually used the rice mill, or the rice towers out in the port, too, you know, which was a great place to put them. So I think there's plenty of opportunity, but I think we really need to open our imagination to this. Try to utilize what's around us out in Southport, looking at the school, or is the old ordinance, could they go on a school ground? That was banned from a school ground or a park, right?
No, they, they could have gone on the school grounds. In fact, there was one that was looking at attaching to the football stadium lights. However, it was within 500 feet of residential.
Would that be close, though, wouldn't it? Out in the middle of that? Maybe there's something we could look at like that. If, if it's just going to attach to something else, we can get it a little closer, so that it's not a tower, it's just attached to something. I think that's the kind of opportunities I'm looking to see out of our ordinance.
I'm, I'm hearing you, and I'm, I'm hearing a given and take, a give and take, if we're going to allow it near residential, we need to put some tougher restrictions on it, and...
Or give them an opportunity.
And they need to work hard at making it look or fit in.
No, I, I agree. I, what my suggestion would be, I think Charlie's ideas are all good ones. I think the focus should be on creative opportunities and encouraging the kind of, the kind of uses that he's describing, rather than a prescriptive ordinance that says you can't do this. Better to say, the process is easier, or you can do single-purpose structures if you keep them at a certain height, or you co-locate on an existing structure. In other words, write your ordinance in a way that encourages the behaviors that you want.
We can write it to not allow it, correct?
Well, we can't, that's the, that's the thing, is we, we are, we are not, we don't write with a free hand in simply prohibiting cell towers somewhere, because they have a right under federal law to locate facilities as needed. We have rights to regulate them on aesthetic grounds, and there's a tension between those two rights. So better to write an ordinance that encourages them to put their antenna where you want them to be, rather than trying to write a prescriptive ordinance that says you can't do what you want to do. Does that make sense? Which is what I hear Charlie saying.
That, that's what I'm trying to say. I mean, I thought our ordinance, and I still believe our ordinance is fine, because I think there was a purpose behind it, and it's still there today. You don't want it in your backyard, and that, no one does. So with that being said, if we have to have a tower, then we should have some of the setback requirements, so we could move it like we talked, or something, but we should encourage it to go on to structures that, a football field, a Tower Mart sign, the, the signs around, you know, and if we have a problem in our park area, and we'll assume that we want to put one out, you know, in one of the parks the city owns, then instead of it trying to be an 80-foot-high tree, which we don't grow in West Sacramento, make it a 40 or a 50-foot tree that'll blend into the trees that are currently there, and nobody'd even know it was in existence. So I think those are the type of things I've been thinking about. I was concerned that every other jurisdiction had a conditional use permit, but I think you've answered that question for me. And some of these, you know, they were saying that they just allow anything that was mounted onto a facade, or I'm assuming that means a building, a football, upright, whatever. So, you know, I think those are the type of things we should be really looking at, trying to encourage, and discourage in residential, the really high poles. Okay, I'm done talking.
Yeah, go in order of hands that I saw. Mr. Chase?
Just, I, I couldn't help, I'm so fortunate to be sitting next to the sage here at this media table. It was reminding me of, you know, decade-long discussion of parking lot lighting heights. I mean, they started out very high, because you get the maximum photometrics, but they're not that attractive. To get them more pedestrian-friendly, we lower the height, but as we lower it, we know we need more of them. But yet, I think oftentimes, that is the better solution, to have more smaller ones to blend into the tree heights, and perhaps somehow, I mean, to me, the same logic could apply here, that if you reduce the height, you will be allowed to have them closer together to provide coverage.
Sandeep?
I, I want to thank staff for working on this. This was really responsive to, to us, is when we brought up that we were getting, we wanted more guidance, and so I, I appreciate the work. With regard to, and I, I also really appreciated the, the review that was done of other policies. I think that's, that's really helpful. For me, with, with the exception of the monopole, I, I like the idea that's being put forward here, that it's kind of a multipurpose kind of facility. Some things in the Santa Cruz, and I know that they're very restrictive in terms of some of their policies, I just found that, that, that some of their approach, that facade-mounted and roof-mounted equipment required an administrative permit, but all other facilities required CUP and design review, or something like that, I think that might be something that some of us, or most of us would, would find useful or helpful for us. It also has the, within a residential, it, they prohibit the wireless facilities unless it can be demonstrated that a facility would eliminate or substantially reduce one or more service gaps. I think that, that's important to us, too. For me, I do, you know, Ms. Allen shared with us that our safety, uh, safety folks are relying more and more on wireless. I, I think there's an obligation for sa, for us to be considering safety in the city, so I, I think we do have to, have to deal with how we're going to be locating these facilities within residential or near residential areas. So I, for some reason, that, when I was reading through and trying to figure out, okay, if I had to pick one of these sets, and I know we don't, I know we can mix and match and do what, what's West SAC for us, but there were some things within the Santa Cruz thing that just resonated with me when I was reading the, the document. So again, I, I think, I, I'm really grateful that this got taken up. I, I know how limited staff resources are right now, given our budget constraints in the city, so, and, but I also know that we're going to have more and more folks coming forward to us, as, as we've seen, and so we need, I think we need to shore this up before we take more applications, so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Joe?
Yeah, I, I actually agree with what Charlie said. Those are some of the points that I, I did want to cover, I won't rehash them, but I, I had a, had a hard time accepting going from the 500 feet to zero. And, and I would like to see some sort of buffer, even if it's a minimal buffer, and I, I, too, I'm not sure what that 500-foot reason was for, if that was arbitrary, or, but, but I know that I wouldn't want to walk out and see that, you know, in my backyard, either. So I, I have, I have a hard time going there to nothing, because that opens it up to right there. And I recall, as Ms. Hill gave the presentation, I thought she said something about a minimum higher height on these, but as I see some of the other cities, they go as low as 45 feet, and maybe you can clarify for me, is, is that a direct correlation? If you had them 30 feet, you could get the same amount of coverage as long as you had more? Or is it something to do with the building around those towers, how they bounce off, how they hit each other?
In terms of that, I did speak with someone in the industry about heights, and they said that there are issues having to do with topography, with other buildings, with either, with even large trees, that is one thing they have to take into consideration when they figure out how tall it has to be.
So, so a large tree or a structure could interfere with?
Yes.
How that signal hits?
It could cause this.
Even if I had more towers, it could still interfere with that?
It, it could cause them to have to put up more towers to compensate if, for instance, it's bouncing off a building, or if a tree is interfering with it, it may cause more towers to get the same coverage, is what I was told.
And, you know, not, not being familiar with the cost to carriers to rent, I'm sure at some point it becomes cost prohibitive to rent from multiple tower to multiple tower. I wouldn't know what that, that point is, but I would agree that within the residential areas, we have to try something different, as opposed to just sticking that structure out there on the vicar's lot, and 80-foot-tall structure, and, and I would like to see, you know, it's worth discussion, some sort of buffer from the residents, so that we're not going to put a 10-feet from somebody's front yard.
Okay, does that give staff enough direction?
Yes, I think so. No, it was really good.
All the, from multiple angles.
Really good comments, and I think we can come back to you with something that is a lot closer. So this was a good first step. I do want to clarify one thing, just to make sure I heard right. So we're looking at trying to stay with a wireless telecommunications permit, which is going to act a lot like a conditional use permit. It will be heard by the Planning Commission, maybe with the possibility that we could have some that are administratively reviewed, if they are ones that are either going on in, well, there's, there's already the requirement for if it's going on an existing co-location, that it's strictly just a building permit. We can't require any sort of entitlement there. But if they were to locate on an actual building, or within a building, or on some other existing support structure, like a flagpole, is that something that this commission would like to see possibly as an administrative process, or do they want that to come back?
Would we see that like we used to, where it's just a zoning administrator action?
We could set it up to be a zoning administrator action on those. Would that be acceptable?
We, we certainly can.
Yeah, and then.
I think, I think that, you know, and I'm only speaking for myself here, but I think I'd still like to see what's going on, at least in the beginning, to make sure our ordinance is doing what we thought it should be doing.
Now, the zoning administrator, remember, that's not something that comes to the Planning Commission. But we do post it for you.
We used to do that, though, with even the zoning administrator action to approve cell towers, we still saw where they were going.
We probably could create a clause where wireless permits would be ratified.
You'd be treating them differently than we currently now treat zoning administrator actions. You're, I think you're referring to how it used to come back, sometimes it would put on as for ratification, although I think.
That's pretty much what they were.
Yeah, well, then we changed the ordinance a couple of years ago to eliminate some of those, but there's no reason why the, we're doing the new ordinance on this.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, from my, my standpoint in the beginning, if you think that that's a little easier step, I don't care, but I would still like to see what's going on with them in the very beginning. And then if it goes along fairly well, and we want to change it in a year or so, that might be fine. But I think in the very beginning, I'd like to see what's going on out there with this.
Currently, nothing prohibits the zoning administrator from bringing in, reporting and outing up to Planning Commission, so we could just do that as sort of an administrative policy.
I, I wonder if it's possible to see what a pole would look like that's mounted on, say, a flagpole, or, or something like that, that's big enough to have three carriers on it, what something like that would look like? Is it?
I don't think you would get three carriers.
Yeah, you may not get three, you might get just one, and they're usually like the whip antennas. They're, they're pretty Slim Jim, the whip antennas is what would go on those.
There's one in Grass Valley, and that's what it's like. It's like a whip antenna on top of a flagpole, but all people see are the flag that's whipping in the wind, and they have lights on it. So it looks like a flagpole in a school, but on the very top is a little whip antenna. Where they have their equipment, I have no idea, but I know that's what it is.
Mr. Chase?
One quick question, Charlie. I, I know we're a, we pride ourselves on being a green city and sustainable. Under item H, under minimum application requirements, it requires 10 sets of plans. Is, is that actually necessary, would you say, or can that be reduced?
Uh, we can take a look at that. That has been our past number for routing to all the various departments that need to review those. It goes to building, planning, development engineering, it'll go to police and fire. So, but we can take a look at that, and we are going more digital these days.
10 sets of plans are one of those little round things.
Going off of Charlie's comment, I know sometimes it's nice to see the administrative actions. I would personally probably yield that if it went to design review instead. But that's just, we could have that, couldn't we, if we made it?
I mean, commission do design review, or use the design review process?
Use the design review process.
Or when they're attaching to an existing building, their support structure?
And thereby not sending it to, to the commission. So if it goes to design review... So if it goes to design review, Charlie would-
I mean, I'm not, I'm not totally against it, but what I'm telling you is, I think in the very start of our ordinance, for the first year or two, I think we should see all the applicants and see what they're doing, and then as you start seeing that they use their imagination, then, you know, very soon Charlie will go, this is a pain in the neck, we need to cut this process a little bit. And that's fine, because we will then have figured out that what we've designed is working. But I think I would, my opinion, again, today, I would like to see what we originally are trying to do to make sure we're, it's going the way we thought it was going to go. That's my thought. You can write any way you want, talk about it.
It would be about the same process in reality, and, and design review, we would then have to probably add something into the design review, because currently, if you-
Well, I, I don't know that you would want, I think what, what I hear you saying is that if we're going to write an ordinance on this, that the process, the administrative process could be like the design review process. You wouldn't want to necessarily shoehorn this into design review, because that carries with it-
Baggage.
A lot of baggage that comes, that isn't really necessary if all you're doing is sticking an antenna on the end of a flagpole. But, um, but you could have a process like that that involves a, you know, a notification, posting of something in a period of time for anybody to come and raise a petition. It would function like a, like the design review does.
Um, we also mentioned, uh, grounds for withdrawal to be added, just summarizing.
Yeah, that would come probably through the conditions of approval that would be associated with this type of permit. Um, is that something that this commission would like to see? What might be a list of the typical conditions that would be associated with this permit?
I mean, I think it'd be exciting to hear Jeff go look this up, but if a guy put up a flagpole, and then the flag decided to tear apart, and he didn't put a flag back on it, what happens?
Uh, that'd be a nuisance.
It would be a nuisance, but I mean, I don't know if you could revoke, but I mean, that's the type of stuff I think we're talking about.
Well, I, I do think that what you're talking, what I hear is things similar to issues with signs, right? Somebody puts up a sign, and then they're failing to maintain their sign, or they abandon it, then they may be in violation of the, both of the conditions of their sign permit, but also it may constitute a nuisance. Uh, so if you, if there are conditions that say, you know, if you're going to stick up an eighty-foot-tall tower, you have to maintain it, and you fail to maintain it, that would be a basis for revoking the permit.
Boy, will you have fun now.
Monica and Harley, wait.
I knew it.
I think we've got quite a bit here.
Okay, um, so I need to inform the audience that the public hearing on this item is currently scheduled for September fifteenth. Uh, our next meeting of August eighteenth has been canceled, so the next scheduled meeting that I have on my calendar is September first.
That is correct. And when this does return, it will be for a recommendation to the city council, because this will also need to go to city council.
Okay, is there any informal discussion this evening?
Motion, adjourned.
Motion and second?
Second.
Second to by Ms. Sandeep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, noes, hearing done. Closed.